I'd like to call this meeting of the county council a regular session meeting in person, live, in, to order. Today's Tuesday, March 8, 2022, and we are in person. And hopefully, some folks are joining us on Zoom as well because we have all the technologies going, and I'm excited about it. Uh, I think I call role. Do I call role? I'm going to meet a lot of guys, Kim. I'm just gonna say, this is all new. Okay. So I will call your names and you can tell me if you're here, even though I'm looking at you. Counselor Munson.
I'm here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Decker.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
We are all here, and now we need to pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call for any public comment for items not on our agenda. So if there's a member of the public who would like to make comment, if you're on Zoom, raise hands. And if you're in person, make a line. It does not look like we have anybody interested in talking to us about things not on our agenda. So we will move on to item number four, which is the adoption of the agenda. And does anyone wish to make any changes, adding or removing items from our agenda tonight?
Move, we adopt the agenda as published. Second.
Fantastic. Then we will move forward to item number five.
Technically, you want to vote.
You have to vote?
Yes.
But you can do it voice vote.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay. Voice votes are back. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda as it is written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. And then I can walk. Thank you. And item number five then is department updates. Do we have any county departments that wish to make an update at this time? We're moving quickly through the agenda. Next are updates from council members, council liaison updates. Are there any updates for us tonight from council members to my right?
I'll make a short update, and that is for the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District. We are meeting Thursday, and one of the items on our agenda is considering a study proposal and the request to share funding with the city of Bloomington regarding development of a biodigester facility. This is not something I'm prepared to tell you about because I, because we haven't had the business presented to us yet, but you may wish to watch the Solid Waste Management District meeting. And it meets here in this room Thursday at 4:00, and it'll be, it'll be on cats as well, and it'll be available. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Munson. Are there any other updates on my right? My left?
My mic's not. I have to share a mic. Mine's not working. I had a delightful time checking in with the assessor and the assessor's office. They are out in the field so much more than most people was recognized, checking on all the properties and answering questions and making sure that the assessed values are correct. And she has great news, which I'll let her share about how much has been added with new assessed values because, of course, we've seen a lot of new growth. But one of the things that we want to make sure that people start looking for, which will be happening in two or three weeks, I think it is, is that Form 11 will be coming out, and so many people see that in the mail and they just think, oh, well, it's trash mail or something, and they don't pay attention to it as they should because there's, that will tell you what your assessed value is, and you only have a certain length of time in which to respond if you do not agree with those values. So please keep an eye out, be coming in the mail, and Assessor Sharp will be here another time to let us know that growth in the assessed value, that's good news.
Good. Thanks. Are there any other updates to my left?
I have one. Um, so I'm still getting acclimated to my new role, and we have, with the Women's Commission, we will have our first meeting Thursday, March 17.
Oh, you unplugged everybody.
Oh, sorry. I wanted to see. Yeah, sorry about that.
So, you have long voice. Um, so again, we have our Women's Commission is beginning Thursday, March 17 at 5:30. So Thursday, Monday, that is interested in applying. We're still looking forward to go to be a part of that. And then I'd just like to say, also, whatever you want to in my policy that will be, that they want to take those, this past week, it was very, and why, as well as being able to come soon when they're ready, and see all of this, in regards to the probation of office, and there's, they're coming out safely later in regards to, and how they are, what to sponsor, so very, and.
Thank you. Counselor Decker.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd be in trouble if I did not do the following update on behalf of both the clerk and the election board, that we do have an election this year in 2022. I know there's a lot going on, but we don't want to lose sight of that and also lose sight of the fact that we do need poll workers to assist with that election. We know that those poll workers are fundamental to that process. And so if you have been a poll worker in the past, if you are interested in being a poll worker, certainly now and in the future, in this great service to the community, please consider contacting Karen Wheeler, who is the election supervisor for Monroe County in the clerk's office, and her number is, or the number for Election Central is 812-349-2690, 812-349-2690. Please be a poll worker. They've also set up a portal where you can learn more about that duty and the, the, the background on it. And if you simply are struggling with that and you can't do all that, just Google Monroe County Voters, and I bet you'll get there. But please, to make the election happen, to make sure that, that the process goes off, we need those poll workers. So I'm gonna start issuing that announcement along with, of course, our clerk, and, and we appreciate our media for covering that need as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Decker. So we will now move on to item seven on the agenda, which is American Rescue Plan Act requests. And we currently don't have anything slated. We had put this as a placeholder so that we could hear requests from the commissioners in a timely manner, and we have since learned that these requests, these appropriations must be noticed as normal appropriations and probably will not necessarily keep this item on the agenda going forward as a placeholder. We'll just put it on as necessary, and of course, the commissioners are welcome to come for any department updates at any point. So that brings us to item eight, which is from, it's called Stone Belt Presentation. And so I'd like to now invite Leslie Green and Vida Dewis to come up to the podium, please, and give us a brief update on Stone Belt. Welcome.
Shall I start over? So I said, thank you for making time in, in your agenda today for us to speak with you, and I would like to introduce my successor, as I am retiring in April. But I'd like to say a few more things about Stone Belt to familiarize you more with what we do and what's going on, what's been going on at Stone Belt. It's been a while since I spoke to this council. First of all, I want to say thank you to you all for continuing to provide funding for our, what's called Operation of a Center. That's how it's, how it's labeled in the, in the legislation. It gives you the ability to provide funding to us on a voluntary basis, and you have done that ever since I can remember almost, but I think Charlotte Zitlow was one of the primary people that got this started for us, identified that this money was available for you to support Stone Belt, and I know you also support Life Design. So all good stuff to support people with developmental disabilities as they live, learn, and grow in our community. So Stone Belt is an organization, as I said, has been here since 1959, so we're about 62 years old now, and parents started Stone Belt because they wanted a place for their children to have, to go to school and to learn and to be productive adults. And before that, the other choices were to send them to an institution, a state institution, or to keep them at home. And so, you know, families did various things based on what they thought was best for their family. I'm happy to say that Indiana does not have any state institutions now that help, that have people with intellectual and disability, developmental disabilities. And we were a big part of, of that back in the 80s and 90s of helping people move out of places like Muscatetuck and Central State and other folks to come and get services right here in our community. So that's been very exciting over my time in 42 years of Stone Belt, to see that movement of having people institutionalize or, or just languishing at home, to see them to be productive citizens who work in the community, who own homes or rent homes in the, in the community. And all of that is to all of our benefit, to, to, to have individuals making their contributions and living their best life here in Monroe County. We do serve two other counties. We do serve Lawrence County and OrthoLumine County, but by far, the biggest part of our operations is here in Monroe County, probably something like 75, 80% of what we do is here. In a, in a good year before COVID, we served about 1,300 people. That's dropped off a little now because not everybody has been able to return to services, but we're gradually making our way back. I heard this this morning, we had identified at least 31 people that, that, you know, we feel like we can bring back. One of our barriers, as you've all probably heard us talk about, is having enough staff. So this, the pay for our staff from our Medicaid funding is, is not sufficient enough for us to pay anybody in our organization what they're really worth. So we continue to go to the State House and, and other places to try to boost those salaries and get more direct support professionals online with us. But let me tell you a little bit about the services. So we do have a large residential program. We have here in Monroe County, eight group homes that have anywhere from five to seven people, and they're supported around the clock, 24/7, so 365. And so the, we, that takes a large number of staff to do that, but we also have about 70 or 80 people that have their own place. They either live at home with their families and we're providing support in that home, or they rent an apartment and then we provide support. And that can be everything from, we see them once a week for a couple of hours to we're with, with them all the time, all their, all their hours. So again, a very labor-intensive group of services there. And then we have a really successful employment program, and that's, that is main work for Stone Belt has been until the last, I'd say, three to five years, was to operate what I think is the best supported employment program in the state of Indiana. And we get people all the time asking us to come and learn what we're doing so they can take it back to their communities. So very, very good employment programs, getting people out to work at IU, at Cook, at, you know, various restaurants and other small businesses here in town, where we have individuals that we support everywhere. We also have another program called Lifelong Learning, and it's going to be changed to Employment Fundamentals. So I bet it will talk more about that, but we have people that are doing things in classrooms and out in the community. Peter, you probably remember going on a hand-in-hand food route. So Councilman Iverson was a former staff of Stone Belt, and so know him, know us very well, worked with an individual who likes to move a bit. And so I bet you had your tennis shoes on when you were working.
It was a wonderful experience.
Yes. Yes, and we appreciate what you did there. So, you know, we go out and do volunteer work in the community, collecting donations from doorsteps, from our hand-in-hand program, getting them over to the community kitchen. We have people that go out and deliver meals on wheels. We have folks that are doing all kinds of, all number of things in the community, including going to Y and anything else anyone else would do, they're, they're involved in. So, and then we also have a work program at our facility in Bloomington that provides supplies for Cook Incorporated. They give us the raw materials, we do some manufacturing of those materials, assembly of those materials, and then get them back out. And last year, the 70 or so people, well, it's actually less than that, it's only about 50%, 50 people now are getting, are turning out almost five, almost six million pieces a year, error-free. So that's, you know, that's one of our operations that, that people are pretty familiar with. We also have, throw in there an art program, and Councilman, Councilwoman Munson is showing off some of that today. We have, we have programs that help support people with, with behavioral challenges, so behavior, behavior clinicians who help us, help the individual develop what works best for them in terms of what, how they control their environment and, and how things work, how we can change the environment to make things most successful for them. We also have a full component of nurses that go around and provide support, and you can imagine what life for those nurses has been for the last two years. They have done double duty with giving out vaccinations, doing COVID testing, advising staff and, and clients about COVID responses and COVID care. So they've been very, very busy. We do have a mental health clinic that's over on, at our location over on Adam Street, and we have a practicing APN and then a group of therapists that do that. So seems like I forgot one thing, but I'm, it's not coming to me right now. So we, we are very, very busy with all these services. We are working to try to be post-COVID. We thought we were post-COVID last July, but it turns out we weren't. So we're working hard to, to get back to that place. So I will be retiring on April 1st, as, as I announced, previously announced, and it's, it's with some bittersweet feelings that I do that. I'm ready for another chapter in my life, but I've had such a good and wonderful career at Stone Belt, and, and you, and a great part of helped, helped that career be as successful it is because the funding that you provide gives us a chance to do some things we wouldn't otherwise be able to do, or sometimes it fills in the gaps of where we've had some funding cuts. So that consistent local funding has been extremely important, and I, I hope you'll continue that indefinitely. So I would like to introduce you real quickly to Vida Dewis. She is my successor and was chosen by our Board of Directors to, to take my role when I leave. We officially started overlapping on, on March the 1st, but we've been overlapping a long time, and she's very, very ready to take the, take the wheel of Stone Belt. She's been with us for 31 years. She's overseen all the programs, and she sees, I think she has a great thoughts about the future. So I'm gonna let her take it from here.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. It is really exciting to be with you at your first in-person meeting in probably two years. So we have, excuse me, we've started in-person meetings again, too, and it is really nice to see people's faces without face masks all the time. So I have been with Stone Belt for 31 years. During that time, I've been involved in every program we have. I am most known for employment, as Leslie mentioned, and I'm pretty proud to say several of our employment staff are up at the state employment conference these next two days presenting on employment services and the innovative things we do at Stone Belt. So I want to talk to you just a little bit about kind of where Stone Belt is today and, and where we're headed. And the last two years really have been the most challenging time in our entire careers, keeping people safe, figuring things out. Felt like we rewrote policies every day. It was a Chris Farley skit, I think, on that from Saturday Night Live, but really, really just struggling to make sure we were keeping people safe. Our clients are very vulnerable, and so that was a lot of challenge. One of the very exciting things we did in partnership with the state was with our nurses that Leslie mentioned, run a vaccine clinic and got over 200 clients in partnership with Life Designs vaccinated, when we were really challenged to find places that were offering vaccines to some of our younger folks when it was still just by age. So we are climbing out. We're climbing out slowly, dipping our toes in the water, trying to bring people back into services safely. We still have a long way to go. We've got a lot of people still in their family homes that really need us to get them back into services. We've been able to get most of our residential clients back into day services, and that's where we're making some of our real changes for the future as well. We are working to convert all of our day services into what we're calling an employment-first model, and we believe that employment is a fundamental part of people's lives as adults. And so we have our community employment program, we have our manufacturing program where we do the cookwork, and we're trying to add workers with and without disabilities into that program and bring in more jobs that pay higher piece rate that will allow us to pay higher rates to clients, so clients are earning better wages. The biggest transition will come in our day services, where we're doing that volunteer work and that community work and facility-based work, where we'll start shifting the focus to be on pre-vocational skills. So we'll be working to teach people the skills they need for employment, whatever job they might have, what I call the soft skills. So conflict resolution, communication skills, interviewing prep. There are things we can do underneath the same activities that we're already doing. So when you're out in the community volunteering, did we get started on time? You know, did we dress appropriately? All of those soft skills that adults need. So we're in the process of making those shifts now. Our greatest challenge has been for quite some time, but it's been incredibly exacerbated by the pandemic, is staffing. And we are at times almost at crisis places with staffing, trying to run 24/7, 365. We're doing as many innovative things as we can, but again, most of my career's been in employment, and one thing we know is we're not alone in that. Every employer we know is challenged to find employees, which makes our job even harder, trying to find employees when we can't pay the wages that some businesses can. So again, I'm gonna end with echoing what Leslie said. The financial support that the council provides to Stone Belt really does fill gaps and really allows us to have some consistency when many of our other sources are not. So we thank you very much for that, and I look forward to being a resource to you, giving you regular updates as you might want them, and getting started in my new role. So thank you. Any questions for us?
Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations to both of you. Yes. Are there any questions from council members? Tamari? Any questions? Yeah.
So if, if someone might be interested in being employed to be, I know a very good friend of mine was one of like the house moms or whatever, and she's no longer with us, but she loved that job, and, and the people in that house loved her, and they would interact socially and, and, you know, go different places together, and it's a very rewarding job for somebody who, who can, you know, make that work for their schedule. Should they contact, just contact your office or?
Thank you for saying that, and it is an incredibly rewarding job. And one of the things that we are able to offer, being a 24/7, 365 days a year of service, is flexible schedules that really can often work with about anybody's schedule, and you can apply online at our website, www.stonebelt.org.
Definitely encourage anyone interested to do that.
It's a very rewarding career. Obviously, we both, I started as a DSP. They don't call them.
So on Vida's behalf, I'll say, I'm sure she would enjoy any of you coming for a visit to Stone Belt to see how things are going on the ground there.
Absolutely.
Any more questions?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, how many, how many total employees do you have approximately?
Approximately 500.
So I always remember, Stone Belt is really, it is one of the largest employers in the community. I think a lot of people, you're at least in the top 20, right, in terms of employees?
And a lot of people don't realize.
I just want to say here, on behalf of all of us and, of course, the community, thank you so much to both of you for being here today for our, this in-person meeting. Ms. Green, thank you for your service, which can't be undersold on how much you've done. I speak on it a lot, but I've had some prior experience before council, both federal and state levels, and here's what I will tell you, a proud community should know, in a proud community that should be very proud of Leslie Green's work, is that wherever you go, to have those conversations that Stone Belt becomes relevant to, and as community members, whether that be on Capitol Hill, whether that be in our governor's office or quarters of the State House or in this community, they know Leslie Green and they smile when they hear her name. I know not all of us can enter those buildings and get those smiles. And when we're talking about smiles, when you visit Stone Belt, that's what you see. I think Leslie told me once on a visit that former Bloomington mayor Mark Cruzan said it was one of the happiest places in this community, and that is a beautiful sentiment that you feel the minute you walk in there, and that is wonderful. And Ms. Dewis, I'm so excited for you to step into this role and to take this legacy on, and it's just wonderful to have both of you here today in, in celebration of, of this moment and new good things, and new good things that are happening as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here. We are now moving to item, actually, if counsel will allow me, I got a note that we did have a department update, and I'd like to go back to that item on the agenda, if that's okay, and then we'll proceed, if that's okay. Our auditor wanted to give us an update.
I told Kim I didn't have to. I just want to touch base with you and see if you guys had any questions about annexation. As you know, five of the seven areas passed muster on the number of people who petitioned against it. Can you hear me now? I talk so loud, I'm always afraid I'm gonna blow your ears out. So anyway, so five of the seven areas passed on the number of people who petitioned, six, had to be exceeded, had to exceed 65%. Two areas, one A and one B, fell between the 51 and the 65%. So that determination is yet to be made, and I know there are people who are working on possibly filing to block the annexation through a court process. That has not happened yet. The number of days still available to do that is still in the, and it's 15 working days, still in the, in a period of time that they can, they can do that. But there was two ways, and I've been asked about annex, about assessed values. So we looked at the number of people first, and then if it would not have, the five areas would not have had enough, we'd have looked at AV, but they, they did, so we didn't have to look at the AV because it's either or. In one A and one B, it, it, it did not exceed 65% on AV or, or on the number of people. So I kind of wanted to clarify that in your, if you had any questions about that, and just really ask you, is there any, is there anything you want to ask me? Or I should acknowledge that Patrick Ellis and Chris Munch worked
Or I should acknowledge that Patrick Ellis and Chris Munch worked very, very hard and arduously on this project. This project was a huge project and it failed during the time we were doing, doing a audit for Gatsby as well as outside auditors and substate auditors coming in. And it's been a very difficult process, but we took it extremely seriously. And those two gentlemen were just, I mean, just really impressed the heck out of me. I was very, very surprised at the amount of energy and the amount of professionalism. I always expect a lot out of them, but they certainly exceeded that. So I just really wanted to ask, did you have any questions?
Sorry, I was just wondering if you, I guess, what's the timeline with respect to any subsequent litigation? I know the city has indicated they disagree with some state legislation on the waivers. Is there a particular time that they have to address that?
I'm not sure because they're, what they're interested in pursuing through the courts is not prescribed in the Indiana code. What is prescribed in the Indiana code is the timeline on the annexation process. What they're, what they're talking about challenging is the constitutionality of the change of Indiana code. So I don't really, Dave might be able to answer that, but I can't. Thank you. I can't hear you.
Well, and then what about the one A and one B? What's the timeline on, on that? Because that is.
15 working days from when I certified. And a couple of people have also asked what does certification entail? And it just entails me adding it up and certifying it with my stamp as filed in our office. I don't actually go to the state house and file anything or do anything that's, there's no real prescription for, for a, a process. It's just I have to inform the city council if they, where they fell on that, on that And those are filed in my office. If you guys want to copy, I think I might have even already sent you information about that.
First of all, congratulations to all the people who really went out there, went door to door and just worked so hard for their neighborhoods. And so, I mean, I'm just grateful to see that kind of interaction here and people meeting new neighbors that, that was, if nothing else comes of this, that was a really great thing to see people working together. But do we have, maybe you answered this and I wasn't understanding, the timeline that if they are going to be able to come forward to take that to court, the citizens? What is the deadline?
So it's 15 working days from when I certified and there seems to be about a week left, about five days left. So three.
Okay, about five. Yeah, but I didn't, I just kept.
But Marty, I did want to reiterate what you said because from the end that I see, which is kind of the Switzerland end, because you know, I serve both the city and you guys and as taxpayers and pretty much everyone, just seeing the interaction from everyone coming in and filing. And I've done a lot of campaigning in my life, but it was a different perspective. It was a bipartisan, we all hands on deck, we love this community, we care about my neighborhoods. I've met this neighbor, I've met that neighbor. This is the most, most interesting and most interactive I've ever been with my neighbors in my life. So it was, it was sort of kind of like the county fair where you bump into your neighbors, you say hello and, and you leave and it, it wasn't about the rides, it was about the experience of seeing your friends and family. So it was a really nice camaraderie that I saw develop amongst, not me and them, but amongst the people who, who participated.
I have a quick question about that, if I may. So I was trying to read up with everything and with one A and one B. I guess my quick question is, is it this, did I read correctly that the citizens that are contesting this, they have to fund, like for their own litigation? Is that accurate?
Um, yes, that, that is actually accurate. So they have to, so you have to live in one of the areas to file, either in one A or in one B. And you have to file in your area. Somebody can't file on your behalf. It has to actually be, and I say live, but really own property, has to be a property owner from those areas because they have the vested interest of, of the services and the taxes. So once somebody files, I think there, there's a nonprofit that's been started to try to help them raise money through community action. And, and so it's very interesting to see the dynamics because like you see people from one A helping the people from one B, people from five helping the people from two, and not just giving them advice, but saying, I'll drive you around so that you'll be safe while you do this. And, and it's, so I'm not sure what will develop. They only have a few more days to file and I do expect them to file. But it has to be someone who actually owns property there in, in those areas. And next week, or if you would like, once that does get filed, then I can report back during the work session, what actually happened and kind of give you guys an update if you guys would like that.
Thank you. That was really informative. We're going to go back to our regularly, oh, yes.
I do have an update from the legal department.
Oh, good.
And this is for the public. We did hire an attorney to fill the vacancy created by Margie Rice's departure, and that is Molly Turner King. And she will be at your next council meeting. And I want to thank you all for, for helping us out with those interviews. I think they went well.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for managing that process for us because that was, that was very pleasurable in terms of, of getting through something that I'm still not quite over, which is Margie's leaving. Anything else? Questions?
I'm, I'm just very happy to know that we were all included and, and had an opportunity to meet those folks and to look at their resumes and to feel like that our voices were heard. And so I was delighted with the outcome. I think we're going to have great results from that. Of course, we'll still miss Margie, but as I told her, I'm not going to say goodbye. She's not going anywhere. She still lives here, so.
The good thing is that is an in-house hire. So it's nice that, that we've included the county family and, and changed someone's role that already has the, the background. So I'm, David, kudos to that.
And my understanding is we'll be asking Margie to attend our next meeting perhaps with the new hire and help with the transition. So that'll be good. That'll be really good.
I'll, I'll let you know that I met with Molly last week and she had already watched all of the council meetings that were held this year and all of the PAC meetings. So she's, she's excited about it.
Wow.
That's part of what she said on the, or someone had said about her, that she was always prepared. I'm going, yay.
Thanks for, thanks for that update. I believe we're at item number nine.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for a cash fund to fund transfer of $25,000 from Fund 91589621 Vax Administration Reimbursement to Fund 1159 Health Fund and simultaneously create a new account line 32740 Immunization Expenses in Fund 1159 with an additional appropriation of $25,000 in the Services category and then deappropriate account line 32740 in Fund 91589621. Second.
Welcome.
Good evening. Wow, it's been a long time. It's been a long time. So very nice to be with you tonight and thanks to council staff for helping us. It's been a while since we put this in and we started with this grant, grant, remember it's not technically a grant, but it's the method in which the state can send these funds. They build the administration fee for COVID vaccine on our behalf. And that's what this is really talking about. So originally they, we set up a fund for it as we were instructed. And then after we did that and appropriated funds, they came back and said, no, it needs to be in the health fund, just like any other vaccine reimbursement would be. And so here we are today. So as I was reviewing this and coming in, my head started spinning a little bit. So I'm going to break down what I need and I'm sure that's what is in here, but it just, as I reviewed it, I'm like, okay. So the vaccination administration reimbursement, the 9158 fund that we set up in October, we need to close, right? So we don't need that to be active at all. So that's where that deappropriation of funds is, right? What we need in 1159 is a revenue line to, so that we can track the vaccine revenue funds that we get. And then we need an vaccine expense line so that we can send that money out and the $25,000 appropriation into that so that we have it. We don't really know how much money we will actually get in reimbursement. So that original amount came to us in $25,000. I anticipate it will be more than that. It could be less than that. And so we'll adjust as we go. But that's one of the reasons we need that revenue line so that we can track. This is the money that came in. This is what we need to make sure that we appropriate. And the bulk of these funds will really go back to one, our, we have a partnership with IU Health for public health nursing. So our nurses did those vaccines. And so the bulk of that money that we got reimbursed for our clinics that we did through the public health clinic, the bulk of that money will go back to them to cover that cost. But Indiana University also did a public vaccine clinic on our behalf. That vaccine clinic they did at Assembly Hall that was open to the public was also built on our behalf. And so the funds that come in from that will essentially go back to them. We'll keep a portion of that for that really kind of, again, that administration work as well. The other thing that they did with this grant is because they hadn't paid us out yet and there was apparently some signature, not on our end, but on the state end, some signature snafus. So this grant actually kind of backtracks a little bit as well. So it's 21 and 22. That's a sidebar that you don't need to worry about, but that's what we're asking for. So we don't need the one fund. We want to close it, get those funds out of there and appropriate and put in the correct lines that we need in 1159.
Simple.
So you start talking about it and what we need to do. So it was like, this is, I asked Michelle, like, I know that there, isn't there a form for deappropriation? Like, well, yeah, there was. And so here we are. So thank them, they're great. They're always looking out for me and helping me with my questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Condon?
It is wonderful to hear that we're getting some reimbursements for all the hard work that you all did. So this is really good to see. I know it's a little convoluted, but it's wonderful to see.
Yep. Hopefully, and I guess this is my one question, so far we have not seen any of the funds. So, you know, hopefully we will see those soon. Yep.
Questions or comments? Okay, may I have a roll call vote on this item, please? Ms. Shell?
Oh, sorry.
Or is it?
What was your question?
Is, we're having a roll call vote. Does Megan do that or are you doing that?
Currently Megan's going to do that for you.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
That was item A of number nine. So now we have item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for a category, category transfer in Fund 81539622 Harm Reduction Fund of $4,890 from the Personnel category to $3,140 in the Supplies category and $1,750 in the Services category and simultaneously deappropriate $736 from account line 10121 Health Educator. Second.
Okay.
So hopefully this is easy enough to, this grant is for our Harm Reductions Community Health Specialist. It is on a calendar year, but we don't seem to ever get the grant award early, right? So at, and we came to you at the end of last year to appropriate those funds so that there wasn't a lag in the ability to pay the staff that are in this grant. In the end, we ended up not getting the $736 that we had originally appropriated. Therein lies the deappropriation. And then we have had a change in personnel. And so that opened up some of those personnel funds to be able to use in other places. Originally, it only covered personnel costs. So we have a new Harm Reduction Specialist that should be starting with us next week. So, yes.
Great. Fantastic. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Iverson.
So do you see this, this grant portion not being funded as directly related to COVID travel restrictions? And do you anticipate that it will be funded in future requests?
The $736?
That was tied to travel and training and all that.
Well, it was in, in our budget that we submitted. It really, I think, was about the bottom dollar amount that they had to, to give us and we needed at the time, we needed that all in personnel. And so that change in personnel, we had somebody move into another position within the department, opened up. It did, you know, everybody's talking about how difficult it is to fill positions and it is. And I will tell you, we went very grateful for the compensation changes that you did, but I've had people decline because it's not enough money for different, for various positions. And we're not the only one facing that. You know, everybody that I, I talked to is, but, so we're very, we're very thrilled with the person that is coming into this position. And I always try to look at it, if, you know, those doors close on these other individuals, the bright one is still out there. So that's how I try to look at it.
Any questions? Great. And may I have a roll call vote on this item?
Councilor.
Sorry.
I will comment on this item.
Oh, yeah.
Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote now, please.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, and it's very good to see you all.
Good to see you as well. Now we're at item 10 on the agenda from our Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for cash fund to fund transfers of $200,000 from the, from Fund 11690000 Local Road and Street to Fund 81610000 Sample Road Phase 1, a $200,000 transfer from Fund 11690000 Local Road and Street to Fund 81620000 Sample Road Phase 2 and a $1,200,000 from Fund 11690000 Local Road and Street to Fund 81630000 Hunter's Creek Road Phases. Hunter's Creek Road Phases 2 and 3.
Second.
Hi, and welcome, Ms. Ridge. You are joining us via Zoom, and I can see your face.
Oh, I wondered if I was in there or how that was working. So it's good to see everybody there in person. I thought less, less people in the room is better. So I decided to stick with Zoom at this point. If you have any questions about this, this is for grant reimbursements. These projects are under construction. We had already paid our $1.2 million local match for the Hunter's Creek project. So that one's why that one is a little bit more. Sample Road will be coming. We've paid it, but that's not scheduled to be done until end of the year, first of 2023. So just trying to move some funds around to, to pay for construction.
Do you have any comments or questions, Ms. McKim?
Yes, actually, just on Sample Road, could you give us a little more detail on the proposed schedule?
I can. Utilities should be wrapping up. I believe REMC should be done soon on the West Side. The schedule for completion of that project is the end of November. And they, it's the same contractor, it's forced construction. And they will be working on, on basically both sides, East and West, with their crews over the summer.
So this summer, both East and West will be, will be under construction. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, it'll be done. And what we anticipate is one season, especially since it was the same contractor. The update on Hunter's Creek Road, that is scheduled right now to be completed by Memorial Weekend.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Oh, yes.
Yes, could you remind us and the public how we can go to your website and be able to see all of this written out? When they might see roads being worked on or any work in progress?
Absolutely. So every week, we actually put notices of upcoming closings that we know that as much as we can get notice from the contractor, where we will, where they will be working at, even utilities. We put that out on a weekly notice. You can sign up to receive it as email notice also. We post it on our website. And also periodically, I will put, there is a list of our infrastructure projects. I believe all of them are on there. I just updated it last month. I try and do it quarterly. When I do the quarterly reports for federal aid projects, that kind of gives you a timeline and kind of where that project is at, whether it's in design phase, if it's in right away acquisition, and maybe the future letting date of that project. So all of that can be found on the County Highway page at the www.co.munro.in.us. And again, we also have an email list serve that you can be notified weekly of what's upcoming of closing. So an important one right now is the Curry Pike, Woodyard Road, Smith Pike intersection. Traffic pattern has changed in that area, and I would, so Curry Pike will be down to one lane for a period of time. And the east part of Woodyard Road is closed at this point. That's the first side of the roundabout that they will be building. And then they'll move to the West Side to do, complete the second part of that roundabout this summer. That project is scheduled to go through construction until the end of November also.
Fantastic.
Could you tell us when you anticipate the asphalt plants being ready to go?
I believe it's usually around the first week of April. I believe I was just received information that it might be around April 16. But, yeah, and actually Hunter's Creek Road is one of the first roads on the list to be paid, so we can complete that project.
We have so many potholes out there that people are, are damaging their cars.
And we do. Actually, the plant had actually opened up, what we, what we use in the winter is called a cold mix. And it definitely does not hold like a hot mix. But that is all that is available in the winter months for the potholes. And when we get into spring, the worst thing that happens is when we get the rains, and then like this weekend, we're going to be down to 10 degrees, and we get that freeze, and that's what we call a freeze thaw time. And that is what's creating those potholes. Last week, the plant did open. They had a big paving project for another company, but they allowed us to come in for three days and get hot mix. And so we used four crews a day everywhere we could to try and catch up with some of the major potholes. But it's just that freeze and thaw period right now that, that creates those. So hopefully, within the next month, we'll be back to hot mix and, and can do the best that we can with those right now with the cold mix.
Thank you.
Yes, Ridge, I have a question that I think the public would like to hear the answer to. And that is, is there a phone number that members of the public can call to report a serious pothole? I'm not talking about Littlewoods. I'm talking about tire eater potholes.
Absolutely. Actually, that number is 812-803-6810. And also on our webpage, you can report any type of hazard like that, whether it be a pothole, tree limb, just something that needs investigated, sidewalk work, any type of request through the Highway Department. You can fill out a form, and it gets emailed directly to us.
Okay, would you say that phone number again?
I gotta look again. They just changed phone numbers. January, 812-803-6810.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Any public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Have a good night. We are now at item 11 from our courts.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for the creation of a part-time court bailiff job description.
Second.
Good evening. We were recently asked to sign off on our job descriptions. And when I was looking at them and circulated them for the employees to sign, we realized we did not have a job description for the part-time bailiff. And I currently have two part-time bailiffs. I've had them for a while. I spoke with Michelle, so I need to come to you guys for you to actually approve the creation of it. It is exactly the same as our current full-time bailiff one that has been pre-approved many years ago. The only difference is at the top, it will say part-time instead of full-time. But they do the exact same job duties as a full-time bailiff.
Okay, that sounds straightforward. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, well, do we have any public comments on this very important issue? All right, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
We're at item 12 from the Auditor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Auditor's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1114-0166, Lit Special Purpose YSB, in the amount of $124,722 in the Personnel category. Second.
Hi again. And this is a pretty easy one. Basically, during the budget, we were flipping back and forth of our different scenarios. The, there's many, many different funds. So lots of different lines, lots of different pages, spreadsheets. So we missed a, a, a set of, a little tiny set, which had a perf line in it. And it's for the YSB. And we all love YSB, so we'd like to make sure we pay their retirement like we're supposed to by law. So I'm just asking you to give us the money to do that, that we should have asked correctly for in last fall. So please forgive us and, and grant us this money.
Okay. Do we have any questions from Counsel?
Yes, just looking at the agenda, it doesn't say perf. In the caption, it says FICA. Is, is everything okay with the advertisement, et cetera?
Yes, I, I realized what I, and I, of course, said perf because I looked at it. It actually was FICA. We thought it was perf. We thought it actually was both, but it's only FICA. So
Okay.
But honestly, it's been like six weeks since we did this now. And we've had a lot of annexation between that time period. So these numbers queen around my head. It's, it's not that it's not done correctly. It's absolutely done correctly now, and we're collecting it correctly. It's just I'm tired and I misspoke. So again, please forgive me.
Any other comments? Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, do, do you happen to have offhand either you, Michelle, the, the budgeted surplus for that, that fund for this year?
She's pulling it up. It is substantial, as you guys know.
Yeah, I was trying to pull it up on Gateway, and I wasn't, I'm not finding the right fund, but I should have looked at it ahead of time.
I just have the short, short agenda. I don't have the whole packet, so it might actually be in the packet as well. But she's pulling it up right now. But if you are concerned about whether we have that, we definitely have plenty of money to cover this, of course.
The, the current cash balance as of today, is that what you're wanting?
No, actually, I wanted to know the budgeted surplus. So what are?
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, so currently, the unexpendited balance is $2,629,357. Is the, the unexpendited balance?
Well, do you have, okay. Do you know what fund number this has on in Gateway?
It's a different number.
They call it local income tax in Gateway.
It is, it is. It's like the third one down, but I can't remember what it is. It's a whole different set of numbers.
I mean, I'll look it up myself. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is just that this fund was budgeted in surplus well, in, you know, well beyond the
Absolutely.
expenditures.
Oh, yeah.
And
That should have been our first key right there.
Yeah, plus there's a substantial cash balance, but we know that we have a plan. And the YSB has a plan to, you know, to make use of those funds.
Yes, yes, that you guys will be seeing pretty soon, I think, yes.
So we can move on.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Just as a reminder, when we talk about, we, we want to know a whole lot more than just this is the cash balance. Because we know, just like when you're looking at the, the financial statements, if we already have appropriated a certain amount, then that cash balance is already being spoken for. So those are the things that we need to start remembering to look at.
Gateway is ridiculous. It's slow right now.
Right. I, I will also say that there is a wonderful training video by, from AIC for the county councils. And I, I put that on my page. And I, so if you go to my page, you'll be able to pull it up easier. We should have the Council Office connection as well. Anton, I believe, a couple of years ago or something, it's about two years old. But it's something that every council member hopefully will take time to listen because it's, makes it very clear what we're supposed to be doing. And some people say, well, I didn't know all of that. And it's right there.
Yeah, that is, that's a good reminder. There are a lot of amazing videos and recorded webinar type things available for us. Any other, is there any public comment on this item? And seeing?
Sorry, guys, I'm so tired. I've been, as you know, and spent the whole weekend in an emergency room, two nights, and then skipped one night, then been at the nursing home for two nights. So I'm a little fuzzy. So we went back and checked because, because the FICA, we had two different mistakes. One, we've already completely fixed, and this is the second one. One was FICA, one was perf. So Kim went back and checked because one says FICA, one says perf. This one is the FICA. I mean, the, this one is the perf one, not the FICA.
Sorry.
I said that backwards again. So the perf is a percentage, the FICA is a percentage. They're, they work the same way. So basically, what happened is when we converted the numbers back, one little cell did not get clicked. On one, it was one cell. On another fund, it was another cell. So that's why they're opposites. So this should read Fund 18201, Perf 124-722. So can I get somebody to restate it the way it actually should be?
Counsel, I move, we amend the motion on the floor to change the fund line to 18201, Perf.
Second.
Do we have any comment on amending that? And so could, do public comment? So we need a roll call?
No, you, on the subsidiary motion, you can do a voice vote.
We need a vote.
Oh, a voice vote?
Yes.
Then you'll have to do a roll call vote on the underlying.
Yes. So could we, okay, we'll do a voice vote on the amendment to change it to the perf line. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess. All right.
Hi. Was that about?
I didn't have it turned on. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So now we're back to the original motion. Are there any other concerns or comments? Comments? All right. Any public comment? No. And so we will have a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Our next item is from our own Council Office, item 13.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 Salary Ordinance Note Section, Classification Descriptions, and add the Chief Deputy Prosecutor to the Special Occupation Chief Deputy listing, and add the Deputy Coroner to the Special Occupation listing.
Second.
Okay, this one's pretty straightforward. Do you have any?
No, just that the Auditor's Office found this during, you know, their review with updating the employee information. So we just want to make sure we've got everyone included in the salary ordinance.
Fantastic. Are there any questions from Counsel to my right? Questions? Yes.
Right. I had a request that we get the specific information had coming from the state. And Beth Hamlin did send that out. And they, they state exactly what the judge is supposed to make, and what the prosecutor is supposed to make, and what the Chief Deputy Prosecutor is supposed to make. So, but there is nothing in that state direction that says that we need to, or that we have any obligation to pay the extra $5,000 to, that we pay now for the judges or for the prosecutor or that. And certainly, there's nothing there that says, even if we do pay the $5,000 to the prosecutor, that we would pay any portion of that to the deputy prosecutor. So, I mean, it, this is, it has been done this way in the past. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying I think we should know what it is that we are doing as we are doing it. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying I think we should know what it is that we are doing as we are doing it.
Agreed.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from counsel?
I do have a comment, mainly because I messed up talking about the other one. I wanted to make sure I told you guys, while I may be tired and sleepy, we do have a wonderful internal auditor that you guys provided to our department who catches mistakes like this. She's absolutely amazing. She will be going to law school this fall, so we will be losing her. However, having that second set of eyes on every single thing helps catch all the mistakes before they actually get to the state. So I did want to thank you for that. And let you see, here's a good example on how it has paid off tremendously. So thank you.
Absolutely. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Now we'll move on to item 13B.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 Salary Ordinance and add Fund 91350000 pretrial program grant along with the detail outlined, along with the detail outlined on the agenda.
Second.
Counsel, this is another one of those audits where it was discovered that the probation office had some extra money and was allowed to spend that moving forward. And as we created the salary ordinance, we did not include that fund number within that because we weren't anticipating having any balance. So this is just to bring the salary ordinance current with what has already happened with regards to spending out of that account with regards to employee funds.
Are there any questions from counsel? Is there any public comment on this item? May I have a roll call vote then?
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, that brings us to item 14, the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve February 8, 2022 regular session, February 22, 2022 joint executive session and work session minutes. Do we have any council members who would like to change, modify, or otherwise edit these minutes? Seeing none, then the minutes are accepted as presented. And we can move on to item 15, which is counsel comment. Are there any counselors to my left who have items upon which they'd like to speak?
Yes, we are at the exciting time when the state is there making their sausage and they are at the end of this work. They're almost to the end. They're hoping to finish up on Friday. They do have it scheduled for Monday in case that they don't get it finished on Friday. But who knows? They may even finish it up tomorrow. I know that when I left, they, they were going to come back in session at five from the Rules Committee. And then when they were third doing that, they were going to go back to the Rules Committee, which is what they do to bring it back. And of course, that has to happen with the House and the Senate. There's a lot that's going on up there. And some of the things that we've watched so carefully, it appears that they're not all going to go through. And but this is the time when they start putting things together. So just as you think one is dead, it's like, oh, it pops up someplace else. So this is, actually, we received information from, from the Association of Indiana Counties asking that we contact our legislators. We received that yet just today. I don't have that number memorized. I think it's 382. Is that correct? 381. Anton Neff sent it out to us. It was having to do with, they were going to expand the use residential TIPS of, rather than cutting it off at 1%, it was going to be more than that. That was going to be, and I'm just going by memory of what Anton was saying, that there would be so many of those. And if that would happen, then those, those revenues from new construction and assessed values would not be helping out with the services that we would have to provide. So there was real concern from the County Council Association and the AIC if that should happen. So just when you get that email and they're saying this is urgent, get in touch with the legislators. Hopefully, we're all doing that. If we're not, it's, the woods fall by our own if we get surprised.
That's right. Absolutely. Any other counsel comment?
I would just like to say, I know everybody is excited because this is their first time back in two years. This is just my first time being here in general. So since taking this position, it feels really good to be here with the council colleagues. And yeah, I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, it feels really good to be here with you. Counsel comment to my right. I'm going to start on the end and go this way.
I just wanted to say thank you to Technical Services for the wonderful setup that we are working with tonight. The microphones seem great. And I'm just very grateful that we have a system that can really present well to the public and they, they're going to be able to hear us as well as see us. So please continue to watch us on Zoom, but we'd love to have you come here and see us in person. Thanks.
Sounds like someone fell from up there. Today is International Women's Day. And so I wanted to take a moment to say that tonight, we have heard from a number of just phenomenal leaders in our community who, our community would not be where it is without them. And I would be remiss not to mention the women that serve on this dais with us. Thank you so much for your leadership and all that you do. We really appreciate you. But of course, it's not just about the leaders. It's also about those in our community who don't get that recognition. And I particularly, on this International Women's Day, want to raise the plight of trans girls and trans women. We certainly need to be thinking about them on this day. I may say one more thing. The, the jobs tour hit Bloomington tonight. So we're really excited about that. And in particular, what I wanted to say about that is that we are having a lot of great benefits coming to our community. And in terms of ARPA dollars, we're already seeing some of the work that we're doing there. But I wanted to draw the community's attention to the economic development work that's being done in the Indiana Uplands region. You can find the Ready Plan, the Ready Development Plan online that was published last September. And that deals directly with these, these dollars that are coming to Indiana. And it's really an exciting time as we hear from Stone Belt saying, we can't find enough people to work. We can't have enough people to do these jobs. The economic development dollars are coming to our state. I also want to highlight the Jobs Act that was passed. That's going to be bringing in additional dollars for broadband, roads and bridges, water and public transportation. We've talked about a number of these things already tonight. So it's exciting that the jobs tour is here in Bloomington tonight, and I look forward to watching that recording.
Thank you very, pardon me, Frog. Thank you very much, Madam President. It is so awesome to be back in the courthouse doing this work in the NatU Hill Room, which I've missed very much. I just want to, on my end, thank everyone who has made all of these meetings possible, virtual and now in person, including tech services. And Mr. Evans is up there helping us, steering us along. It is phenomenal. Every time I look at my time clock on my computer in council meetings and I think about how long we were in virtual mode during the, the online mode in the pandemic. And now that we're in person, one of the things that I said in the 2020 election is elected officials can work together, that they can get good results for their community and they can do great things in that, part of that process. And I think that we have been able to do a lot of those things virtually. And I hope that in person and the access that we have where the public can comment via remote from their homes, from the convenience of the technology. I know there will be a lot of growing pains with that. I hope that that allows us all to do our jobs. It is a wonderful community we have, and it is wondrous to be able to do this work on behalf of the folks in Monroe County. So thank you.
Well said. I don't think I'm going to prolong this any longer. So thank you, everyone. Great to be with you and our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.